Sorry about the delay. Jessica, tell me when we're good to go. We're good, thank you. So, good evening, everyone. I will call this hearing to order. I first want to acknowledge my colleagues that are here with us this evening. The vice chair of the Public Service and Transportation -- this coffee needs to kick in. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Councilmember De Ockhauer is here, and also Councilmember Beatty. Thank you both for joining us this evening. Tonight, we are here to discuss complete streets policies. So, for the folks who are here in this room, I do not need to break down what complete streets means, because I know all of you know. But for folks who might be turning in, or who might be curious about what we're talking about this evening. A complete streets policy is a municipal policy that requires transportation planners and engineers to design and maintain roads to be safe and accessible for all users, including pedestrians, cyclists, transit riders, motorists of all ages and abilities. These policies shift a community's transportation practices by prioritizing universal access and connectivity, ensuring that new and retrofitted streets accommodate diverse transportation modes and users, and promote healthier, more equitable, and sustainable communities. So, in English, what that means is, this gives us a North Star for how we are ensuring that our roadways are safe for everybody, because the streets are made for all. So, how we do that, and how we rebuild and reconstruct our streets, essentially, this is that set of policies. So, in the spring of 2024, following a fall and winter where we saw an alarming number of serious pedestrian crashes and fatalities, my office, along with the Department of Public Service, sat down with transit and mobility advocates to hear their concerns. And we heard clearly that residents wanted to know more about the city's complete streets policy. The Columbus City Council adopted a complete streets resolution in 2008. And since then, with the leadership of the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, they led the region in the development of a universal complete streets policy that could be adopted throughout the region. And so far, 12 municipalities have either adopted a policy or a resolution. So, those are all of our partners across the region, from Hilliard, Reynoldsburg, et cetera. I think the department has a list of them that they will show in the following presentation. You can also see them on Morpsy's website. In July of 2024, a year, a little, a couple months after we had our meeting, we heard from Morpsy on their complete streets policy updates, and from our Department of Public Service on their policies. So, tonight's hearing will start with presentations from three speakers from the Department of Public Service. So, they'll provide us with an overview of the complete streets policy updates and the approach that the city of Columbus is taking. After the presentation, we'll also move to public speakers. Today, we have 12 speakers who have signed up. And I want to acknowledge that we receive roughly, and we might be at this now, as I speak, a little over 50 written testimonials that were sent both to my office and to the director and other members of the Department of Public Service. So, I want to talk a little bit about why we're doing this hearing tonight, aside from everything that I just said. This is really about us listening. I wanted to acknowledge Sam Dooling from our Legislative Research Office here at council, my aide Jessica Casares, my other analyst, Amaris Lamus, who's here. We are here to listen, along with our fellow council members and the vice chair, to really talk about what our next steps are. What parts of what we're hearing from the public, what parts, what suggestions folks have, and we've seen this both in the written testimony, and we'll hear it tonight, that we want to begin to implement. Now, implementation, all parts of the implementation, I promise, will not take a year. I cannot promise that will involve everything that we talk about today. But what we are doing is exploring how we strengthen the policies that we currently have, and how we work together to ensure that those policies are not just within the Department of Public Service, because we understand that we are not the only ones who use our roadways, right? So, we actually asked one of our leaders from one of our other departments, from Columbus Water and Power, Deputy Director Ken Heigl is here. Obviously, there are many other departments that, all of the departments are part of this. But as we thought about our roadway, and as we thought about the right-of-way, and who really engages in the right-of-way, and thinking about things like making sure we have adequately lit streets and neighborhoods, that is the Department of Water and Power. And so, we wanted to make sure that they were here as both a listening partner. If there are specific questions that we have that we can ask the department, that does not mean that we're not talking to other departments. This just means that one of our key departments are here today. We also understand that there are other departments like safety, et cetera, that folks would also consider key. Just because they are not here today does not mean that they will not get this information, or that we are not talking to them. So, I wanted to give folks the landscape of what we're doing. And now, I'm going to hand it over to the department. Along the way, since we do have such a healthy docket of speakers, I will have some clarifying questions that I have wonders about, that I want to ensure that we get to. And also, my fellow council members might have some questions. So, we'll ask that along the way, because I find that after the presentation, everybody's kind of spent, and we forgot about page one by the time we get to page 10. So, we'll ask those questions, have a little bit more of a conversation, and then we'll move over to public testimony. So, first, I would like to introduce the deputy director from the Department of Public Service, James Young. We also have with us the Traffic Management Administrator, Ronaldo Stargel. And we have the Vision Zero Coordinator, Dr. Katherine Sadarsky, also known as SWID, much like Beyoncé or Cher. Just kidding. So, Deputy Director Young, I'm going to go ahead and give you the floor, and then you can pass it to your colleagues.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Start off with complete streets. Just to start off, what does public service do? Everybody sees that we're out plowing snow, picking up trash, fixing signals, signs, paving, repairing the roads, and pothole patching. There we go. What else do we do? So, here downtown, we have all the policymakers. We have the people that work on planning, engineering, permits. These are the people usually behind the scenes, but at the same time, quintessential to making sure we're fulfilling our mission to the city. What are complete streets? As Councilmembers said, they are approaching a process to how we design streets and guidance on how we put them forth in the neighborhood through design and retrofit, making sure pedestrians, cyclists, drivers, micromobility users, and public transit users have all access to these streets. And all abilities have the, people of all abilities have the ease of using these roads and retrofits. And through this, I have a lot of slides looking at streets we've done in Columbus, or bridges where we've gone. Anytime we touch one of our facilities, we are upgrading them. And this is West Fifth Avenue, just west of downtown. Other parts of the complete streets and missions of the city that complement it, the first one up here is actually Vision Zero Columbus. It is the center tent pole of our tent for the department. It's the most important aspect of what we do. Everything we do is safety-based. Even though you think we're resurfacing a street, it's based on safety of residents and moving through the town. While we're doing this, we're making sure everything is adequate with mobility going through on Vision Zero. So, we're looking at bump outs, we're looking at speed management techniques, other things to slow people down, and making sure we're protecting all our vulnerable road users. Another tent pole out here, and something that's been long-going with the city, is Zone In. It's our new zoning process, where we've been revising zoning throughout the city. We're actually working through Phase Two. Complete streets, tenants dovetail very well into Zone In, and they complement each other on land use. Complete streets is very involved with context and how land's used, in addition with the type of street in front of it. Sustainable Columbus is another tent pole here. And what we're trying to do with that, through complete streets, is provide other modes other than vehicular travel. So, this could reduce greenhouse gases, get people moving, and making sure, again, people are healthy in our community. Another, two items here, and really, I had a list link us. I had to use one logo, but mentioned it twice. This was a ballot measure that passed last year, and it's really providing a lot to Columbus. We're getting more CODA service for all the residents, so 45% increase in CODA service. Plus, we're getting a bus rapid transit on three different corridors currently being designed, with a fourth and fifth to come. Another aspect of Linkus that was key to the ballot measure was transit supportive infrastructure, which is sidewalks, trails, and shared-use paths. And you'll see this in future slides, where this is dovetailing in. It's funding that's available for all the communities in the CODA service area to build these facilities. And it meets up with complete streets very well. Last year, Bike Plus was an effort we completed. We have gone through and cataloged different streets throughout the city that are going to be focused on bike travel. And that could be shared-use paths, that could be bike lanes, that could be cycle tracks, that could be bike boulevards. It's really looking at our city, trying to prioritize where we're going to have this as the key typology on that street. Why did we create this policy? So, we really wanted to accentuate the fact that all our design's inclusive. Again, we're providing for all modes. We're trying to improve safety in our corridors, providing separated facilities for pedestrians, bicycle users. And again, these are some projects we've had in the past here that we've put on shared-use paths, we've put sidewalks in the area. The other part of providing these facilities is there's economic benefits. We have a commercial corridor. This is Joyce Avenue, where we went through, and we have a sidewalk on one side with a shared pass on the other. And it is an industrial corridor, and it actually provides access for a lot of people to get to jobs or to schools in this area. Again, mentioned healthy communities, that this is one way for us to provide other modes for people to actively get around. Again, we want to provide greater equity to all our residents. We want to make sure all of them, regardless of their age or abilities, have access to facilities to move throughout the city. Up here, we have a roundabout on La Zell Road on the north side, where we actually have a shared-use path on the north side, sidewalk on the south. And provided this is speed management on the corridor. Again, going back, speed management, environmental benefits. Again, having these other facilities provide people to walk, again, reduce greenhouse gases. But also, some of these facilities, like roundabouts, actually provide better levels of greenhouse reduction, because cars aren't waiting, idling and whatnot, and they move through the intersections. And they provide a huge safety benefit, too, for drivers. Again, here's another corridor, enhanced quality of life. So, going through, just highlighting the fact that when we go and we touch a road, typically, we're going through and upgrading it from where it was. And it could have been built in the 60s or 70s. It might not have had sidewalks at all. And when we go in and touch it, we're going in, and we're evaluating and putting sidewalks, shared-use paths. We're looking at the crossings. We're trying to control access to make sure there's not as many conflict points for drivers, for people trying to navigate the area. And again, when we're going through, and we're looking at this design, it's easier when we're reconstructing something to actually consider all this upfront. So, we actually have the best cost effectiveness for the design, and we actually think about how we're going to lay out the facilities, make them match into the context of the area. And again, it actually reduces our costs overall, because it's more costly to try and retrofit something than it is to build it outright in a reconstruction. Again, this policy is for pedestrians, bikes, transit riders, other adults. This is one of my favorite examples in Columbus. This is Mound Street on the west side. We actually did a kind of a physical road diet here. We actually took pavement away to create space for sidewalks. And this was in reaction to children trying to get to the school to the west here.
Deputy Director, I want to stop you for just a second. There's a couple of questions that I have, just in reference to the last couple of slides.
Okay.
So, my first question is, and I think this is a, you know, probably one of the elephants in the room, right? Why, why has this been a policy? Why is complete streets not anywhere within our code? Why have we not gone that direction in the past?
So, I haven't gotten to it. So, we have a resolution, but we've always practiced this. We have not had it in code, because right now, it was a resolution. It didn't have anything, really, any teeth to it. When we passed this back in '08, it's been a tenant for us the whole time, but it doesn't exist in code for the fact I don't think we had anything to measure it on.
Okay. And can you talk a little bit about, I think what we had talked about before was if we had the entirety of the complete streets policy within code, right? It would not allow us the nimbleness of creating change, just given that every time there's a code change, there's a series of events that need to happen to change code. But potentially, there could be broader language that could be put in that would allow for it to have more teeth, to your point.
Correct. Yeah, we want to keep it nimble. We want to be able to react, especially with the other tenant, our missions that are going on in the city. So, Zone In, we're going to go, and we're going to capture more streets, more arterials. We want to be able to dovetail into them and be ready to, again, we don't want any unintended consequences. If we put something in code, it might actually conflict with something else we're trying to change.
And you talked a little bit about some of the, well, I'll start with this one. You talked a little bit about some of our partners, especially thinking around Linkus. And how, can you speak to our relationship with CODA when we think about design projects? And how we are thinking about, Linkus is obviously a little different in the Linkus corridors, right? Because we're prioritizing and rebuilding those corridors for the purpose of Linkus, which then allows us to do lots of other safety features, right? Like protected bike lanes, shared-use paths, et cetera. But can you talk about, if we're not on a Linkus corridor, right? What does that relationship with CODA look like in terms of those design standards?
So, we actually use CODA design standards for their, I'll say, bus stop design. They have standards. We include them in our scoping when we're going through and looking at a project. We go out there and survey, are there bus stops? Do we need to get them involved to make sure they're part of the scope? They review our plans, same as us, to make sure, again, they could be moving stops. We could actually work with them to move a stop, because we're trying to change something for safety reasons or operational reasons at intersections. So, CODA's, if it's just their regular transit, they're part of our design process and review process. And we work with them in the field. Because sometimes, even during construction, we have to relocate some of their stops and work with them on good locations as we're building or rebuilding the road.
And I started with CODA, because it feels as if, that feels like a little easier, right? Because we have an understanding of a route, what CODA needs, et cetera. I think where we have tension, I don't know if tension is the right vocabulary, where we have friction, where sometimes it feels like we are in conflict with each other, is when we think about other departments, right? And when we think about, you know, many times, there has been times where we have repaved a road, and then another department, or even a private utility company comes in, and they have to do work. And now, we have to repave, which just feels, there's not that coordination, right? And that's just like one example. But when you're thinking about the design, right? That can happen. We can probably point to a bunch of different reasons why that happens, or necessity might be the impetus to that. But when we're thinking about these design standards, and we're thinking about complete streets, how do we then, where is the accountability with other departments? Or how are they brought into what, when we think about lighting, when we think about tree canopy, et cetera? What does that process look like?
So, when I mentioned scoping, it's part of the planning process. So, we're sending out these concepts that we're going to go work in an area. We're actually soliciting, so sometimes, we're two to three years ahead of what the construction can be. We're soliciting to other departments. Are you going to be there? We want to, technically, we want to be behind them. And as part of that planning process, we're trying to vet out, again, we're trying to get to where maybe we're the last ones there. Maybe there's, I know we're trying to work toward a dig-once policy right now. I think we'd all be really happy to get disturb-once policy in place in many areas of Columbus. But we do work with water power. We do work with water reclamation. I have to remember the new name. But we do work with them on planning that out. If there is an emergent condition, we will go out, and they do cut up the pavement. We just try and restore more than we normally would, just because we have new surface down there. So, we might pave an entire lane, or from curb to curb, to make sure we get the best pavement surface we can. But again, we go through an extraordinary effort to ensure that we're not impacting residents more than they need to be impacted.
And so, Deputy Director Heigl, I want to move to you for, so if we, in looking at Vision Zero, right? Thinking about complete streets. I mean, one thing, you know, I think a lot about my district. There are people on the south side that don't have streetlights, which feels very basic, right? I mean, if you gave me streetlights or sidewalks, I think we need streetlights, right? I don't, I mean, I think it's a false choice, we need both. But I mean, certainly, people living in the dark feels much safer, much safer, feels more unsafe than the sidewalk situation. How do we prioritize that? Because the Department of Public Service and our plans call for us to have this very specific safety feature, right? How does that then work in your prioritization as a department?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So, for prioritization, we are starting next year with a consultant to do a prioritization plan for street lighting in the entire city. So, that will go through a process of analysis and where we should head with those projects. We have limited funds, of course, right, on an annual basis. So, we will complete that study to give us the plan to go forward to when we have those applicable funds each year that we can work in a planned fashion. On any roadway project, we're always coordinating with DPS on what lighting can be part of that project, and we work together on those.
So, I just, I mean, especially to my colleagues, as we're thinking about, you know, capital budget improvements, as we're thinking about other things, I think this is one of the challenges that we have, right? This is the disconnect. This is where we're not, you know, if you have one department that is saying, this is a safety prioritization, and another department that is not meeting that, then obviously, we're not going to meet that goal, right? And I think that's one of the frustrations. I'm just naming, this is one of the frustrations of, if we have a plan that's being put forward, if we're not all in alignment with each other, then how does that work? Can you just talk about lighting? And how lighting is where that is in terms of the budget, and, you know?
Sure. So, all the lighting, infrastructure, and the maintenance of our streetlights, which is about 60,000 streetlights, is, funding comes from that from revenue collected from our power customers. That is not part of the city's capital budget. So, that's the revenue we're using, is collecting from the rates.
For all of the lighting across the city writ large?
Correct.
So, it is, because like the rest of the department, it is funded by rate users.
Correct.
And from my understanding, because at one point, there was not a decision to invest further in that portion of the department.
Correct.
Then we did not expand the grid, the power grid, which means we have less users, which means we have less money that's going specifically towards that.
Correct. That's exactly right.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I want to go ahead and hand it back to you, to Deputy Director Young, to continue with the presentation.
Okay.
Are you all okay? Did you have questions?
No.
Great, okay.
So, just to go through and highlight something about complete streets, Columbus is urban, suburban, and rural. We're about 226 square miles, which it always fascinates other cities when we talk to them for comparisons, that we actually, you can go out to the edge and see cows in Columbus, and then you can go to downtown and actually see height. So, all these pictures up here of streets could be considered a complete street in their own context. The rural one I have shown up here is actually a site being developed on the southeast side. So, it will have sidewalks. But you can see it's pretty sparse down here right now. I just wanted to highlight here that we passed our resolution in 2008, and we've had all these communities around us that have passed resolutions or policies in the past. I think it goes up to 2020. So, over the course of time, they've been adopting the same ethos and guiding principles. So, these are some of the tenants from complete streets resolutions. The thing I really wanted to highlight, and some things that we are doing different in this policy, it did not work. So, the last two bullets there. We have gone through and defined what's an exception in the policy. We actually had guidance that we've used from other communities on what's good exceptions, and how to go through and have procedures that require documentation for that. We are going to work on a way to actually, I'll say, publish that in some way, shape, or form. But we're working on these exceptions. The other thing that the policy didn't have in the past, or I'm sorry, the resolution than the policy does, is there's a tremendous amount of guidance now. When we first started this, I don't want to call it the Wild West, but there wasn't a lot of things to follow. So, as you drive around Columbus, you actually see old standard practice. You see bike lanes that don't have any buffers, like on Morse Road. Or you see bike lanes that just have paint. They have buffers, like Spring Long downtown, but, you know, it doesn't have any positive separation. Those were vestiges of, I'll say, old design. And as design has continued to evolve, we're looking for more positive separation. We're looking for better guidance from NACTO, which is Ronaldo will talk about. But this design guidance has been evolving over time, and we wanted to make sure we called that out in this policy in addition to the other design guidance we have in our department.
And can you talk about what an exception would look like? Like what, or give an example of one? I know that.
You want to hit it?
Sure. So, later in the presentation, I'll dive into several examples of what constitutes an exception.
Okay, great.
So, again, we built our policy on Morpsy's complete streets policy. We actually circulated this policy to Transit Columbus, American Heart Association, and back to Morpsy. Received a lot of great feedback. I really want to call out the American Heart Association for all their good guidance from other cities, and just good best-practice examples for us to go build ours up on. Now, I'll turn it over.
All right. So, I will get into how the policy will be used. So, we have several different categories of projects and ways that work gets done within the Department of Public Service. So, the first one is public service capital improvement projects. These are larger design projects that are funded through council and move through our full design process. They're scoped. James mentioned earlier that when we scope a project through this process, it is distributed amongst the other city departments to get their input. And likewise, when the other city departments are performing their projects and changing things within the public right-of-way, they share those with us as well for review of the scopes, as well as the design plans. We have 3P projects. So, 3P stands for public-private partnerships projects. And so, these are roadway projects, or sometimes sidewalk and bikeway projects, where we partner with a developer. And the reason for performing the work is often to facilitate safe transportation associated with a new development. The one at the bottom is also developer-directed private projects. So, these are projects to where, again, a developer is building in a new area of town, but they are taking on responsibility for constructing the railways. So, when that happens, that development goes through our typical building and zoning process, where we're looking at the site plan. There may be a series of studies involved to determine what needs to get constructed. We will work with that developer to provide them a scope of work, again, in consultation, not only with other divisions within public service, but also other city departments. And then they move forward with constructing those improvements. A couple of other types of projects. I know public utility projects have been mentioned. So, when those come up, again, we're in close coordination with Columbus Water and Power to make sure, are there ways we can partner and leverage that project to get other improvements? To where maybe Department of Public Service will contribute funding toward a project to get the best possible outcome. The last type of project listed are permit projects. So, these are typically projects where private utilities, maybe private property owners are doing work within the public right-of-way. We look at what they're proposing to do and review that, and make sure that they're at least putting back what was originally there in the first place.
And can you talk about the accountability around that? So, when we do have projects, you know, we do have a utility company, or some other, someone else who's working in the right-of-way for whatever. for whatever, if it's a private developer, there is a certain level of accountability for them to restore whatever they might have taken away. Can you just talk about?
Yes, absolutely. So, um, when a utility contractor is working within a roadway, if they're working within a travel lane, once they perform the excavation work and then need to restore the pavement, they need to pay for the full width of that travel lane. Um, and a lot of that is guided around rules around how they're allowed to operate within our public right of way. But other types of, uh, permit projects could be a private developer. So going back to those developer-funded projects, we may direct that developer, hey, you have to construct a sidewalk along your property frontage. Um, these projects are inspected by our Division of Design and Construction within public service. Um, and they have to step through and make, and we ensure that everything is constructed, um, in accordance with standards and what's been scoped. Um, if that does not happen, there are mechanisms to go back and make sure that, um, everything is restored or improved, um, as it should be.
And that also includes removal of trees. We've had other projects where tree removal has happened and we've restored that in places where we can, working with wrecking parks, et cetera, correct?
So some of the, some examples of policy, policy exceptions. Certain types of roadways, uh, users are legally prohibited from using a roadway. So this most commonly comes up, uh, with freeways. Um, but there are, are certain other types of roadways where that, um, that may be a requirement. Where access is legally prohibited, um, we often look for other alternatives or alternate routes, um, to get people around. So for example, um, something may be constructed along a freeway as opposed to on a freeway where pedestrians are, you know, prohibited from moving. Also, sometimes, um, an exception comes about when the cost of accommodating, um, that particular, um, feature is excessively disproportionate to the need or probable use. Um, so this will come up in situations where, um, maybe just due to the, uh, the way the road is built, the, the elevations, how big of a drop-off there is. Uh, maybe it's a certain roadway where it's easier to accommodate a path on one side of the roadway as opposed to the other. And so that's thought about and looked at as part of the design process. Um, another thing that we commonly encounter is that, um, funding sources. So depending on the funding sources that are used, you may have a lot of limitations on what you can construct. I know that comes into play with utility funding, particularly when working with, um, funding that comes from ratepayers. It generally has to be used, um, for that particular function or, or use. So some of the improvements above and beyond, such as adding a shared use path, is not something that we can do without getting into legal issues. So that's where the collaboration comes into play, to where we may partner with the department, uh, I'm sorry, with Columbus and Water and Power, um, to add funding to a project, to add sidewalk while they're, um, and they're doing the things they need to do. Couple of other examples, um, there, again, substantial funding limitations that can't be overcome with flexible design solutions. This comes up often with bridges. And then sometimes there's a, you know, sometimes there's a reasonable equivalent project nearby along the same corridor. Um, so this is where some bike routes, instead of being, you know, going down a certain street, um, you know, we stripe to where, you know, maybe you go through the neighborhood on a bike boulevard or, or something like that as opposed to, um, fitting it within the main corridor just because, you know, there's right-of-way constrictions, there's, um, severe property impacts and potential takes from the, uh, property owners along the corridor. Um, also, sometimes there is a documented absence of current and future need uh, based on factors such as, um, counts, land use and also connectivity. So this most likely comes up on like small stub or cul-de-sac streets and heavily, heavy industrial areas. Uh, maybe there's an alternate means to accommodate pedestrians. We'll often work through the site planning process, um, to see maybe, you know, there's a shared use path or connection on one part of the development, um, instead of putting it, you know, along the frontage where you would typically see it.
And can I ask you two questions about that as well? Um, can you talk to me about private streets?
Sure, so, absolutely.
Do we have jurisdiction over?
Private streets, um, you see sometimes with a development, um, private streets are streets that are constructed as part of a development, but it's all contained within the developer's property. So a lot of the streets that we have every day are considered part of public right of way. Those are subject to different rules, different requirements, different rights of usage by different utility companies, um, pedestrians, bicyclists, et cetera. Properties, uh, priv, private streets are most commonly seen in certain type of housing developments where a developer can elect to do that.
And those just aren't apartment complexes? Those are also if there's like a HOA president or like a, where there's actual individual homes as well?
Correct, yes.
Those could be private streets.
Some single, um, family, um, developments would may have private streets and then, yeah, the HOA is the body, um, that raises the funding to maintain those streets. Um, as far as the standards for those streets, um, they may not be subject to the same standards as we are. Um, they are subject to basic things from a state and federal level such as making sure that all their traffic signage looks a certain way. But even still, even though they're not required, you know, to fulfill all the same standards, um, we do review those as part of the site planning process and, um, give guidance and make recommendations on, for example, where sidewalks should go, um, to ensure connectivity throughout the development or connect to a nearby transit stop.
And that would also include trailer parks, which we have no, we do not have jurisdiction over either because those are considered private property as well.
Correct.
Okay. Oh, I have one other question. Are we starting to see, um, just because of some of the policy changes from the federal level that would impact some of the policies potentially that are part of complete streets or other parts of our safety plans like Vision Zero?
We have not encountered them directly on any of our active projects that are, um, in planning. Um, there's a, you know, a lot of conversations going back and forth to ensure, um, that we're still able to deliver those projects as originally intentioned. Um, we have heard of some examples throughout the country where that's been the case, where for example, a project that was awarded federal funding then had that funding rescinded. Um, but, you know, fortunately to this point, we have not directly been subject to that.
Thank you.
So how are the exceptions going to be documented? James mentioned this a little bit earlier in the presentation, but we are looking at making refinements to our existing processes to document some of those items, um, on the public side. Again, the scopes are circulated, but be, may, may be a matter of capturing and discussing, um, you know, different, um, elements, particularly the exceptions. On the private side, we'll need to, uh, potentially work with other city departments, particularly building and zoning services to see a lot of those publicly facing processes, um, already capture some of this information, it's just how to best consolidate it, um, to be able to report out on it.
So for example, would that be, you know, I, I know usually we have a project page for a major project, like Cleveland Avenue, right? If you go, you can Google it, on the website you see what are we doing? What the timeline is for the project? Would that be a place where you might see an exception? Or if we're taking a different course? I think about, you know, Cassidy Avenue, right? Where it was a unique both typ, typography, but also there's a huge industrial park that's there with many, many semis that are there. I think it's, I think it's like close to 200 or something. Um, so in that situation where there was a, a certain level of uniqueness, there were certain exceptions to, for example, Vision Zero that we had to take into account. Would that be a place where we would publish that publicly? Or is that going into the thinking?
That, that's certainly one of the potential places, um, and that'll be part of the discussion of whether we publish it there. Um, we are also, um, working on opening up an engagement hub to encourage and welcome more participation and communication from the public throughout the entire design process. So it could end up on that project page where everything's explained there, but, um, there's, you know, that's one of several different methods that we're talking about. Just what's the best way, um, to not only share that information internally, but then also report on it externally?
Thank you.
And as part of that, um, we're certainly working, um, internally with our data solutions and compliance group to see how we can leverage deep GPS and other tools to, um, assist with the process and make it easier to do. So going to the next slide, maybe. So talking about some of the design standards that we use, James mentioned NACTO. NACTO stands for North American City Transportation Officials. Uh, this is a group that consists of, uh, officials from various, uh, cities across the nation that came together and a lot of guidance historically over time, um, from the federal level has really been geared toward moving cars, uh, as quickly as possible and less on how to accommodate our vulnerable road users that James mentioned. So they've gotten together and they've released a, uh, guidance for a lot of different situations that occur in, uh, cities that are unique and not necessarily seen in suburban or rural settings. So some of that is, uh, guidance around biking, some of it is guidance around transit design and just general roadway design in general. So that's a reference document for us. ASHTO, um, American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, they have a lot of different documents and guidance, um, particularly where you're diving in and looking at the nuts and bolts of how a street is laid out, how it's designed, how the curvature should look. A lot of those finite, um, engineering details, um, we pull from there. The next two items are things that we have, uh, created, um, over the course of our, uh, Vision Zero action plans. Um, the first one are the City of Columbus Design Memos. So for years, going back to the resolution, um, that was passed in 2008, one of the things we started doing as a department was there was a lot of, um, new initiatives as far as bikeway design, a lot of new practices, and we're learning a lot of things. But what we did not do the greatest job of doing was consolidating that into one easily accessible location so that people would know what are the standards? What, you know, when a design consultant is looking and designing one of our projects, um, giving them the guidelines to design within. So establishing these design memos, some of the first ones that we did were around pedestrians and bicyclists and some of our practices. And so we're going to continue to grow those design memos to, and that'll encapsulate, um, some of the other, um, best practices from NACTO, the best practices from ASHTO, the best practices from ODOT that are tailored to the conditions that we have to design for within our city. Um, the, the next item, City of Columbus, is a roundabout policy. So, um, earlier this year, we signed a roundabout policy where we, uh, for new intersection redesign locations, um, we need to consider roundabouts as an option. Now, there are some situations where right of way is tight, buildings are close to the roadway and it's not feasible, but particularly when you get into the suburban areas where, um, you have more housing be, getting constructed, we are considering roundabouts as an alternative for the reasons that James mentioned. Um, they can move traffic efficiently, safely, and eliminate a lot of the severe crashes on that we may see at some other intersections. ODOT, um, released this multimodal design guide, um, a couple of years ago and they're, you know, giving trainings and continuing to update that. The guidance in there is really published for a statewide level and that's a wide variety of streets. So we have taken a lot from that and put it into our, uh, design memos to use for our practices moving forward. Um, and then finally, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, um, they release various forms of guidance, particularly when working with private developers and signalization. Um, again, best practices taking from them and placing it into our guidance so that we can use it to, uh, keep our residents safe. And now I'll hand it over to Swit.
Good evening. So I'd just like to say a, a reminder that all of this, um, the intention behind it is safety. We are working as a community, not just under the leadership of public service, but across our entire community, all of our departments, COTA, Ohio Department of Transportation, a variety of partners for Vision Zero, where we're looking to eliminate the worst crashes, fatal crashes, serious injury crashes, crashes involving people outside of a vehicle by 2035. We have committed to that. So all of this work on complete streets that we've been doing, now that we're solidifying as policy, um, is for the aim of achieving zero. So just a reminder for all, our current implementation plan, um, is from 2023 through 2028 and, um, this policy exists in the context of that commitment. So part of the, the measures of effectiveness are already reflected inside that Vision Zero Action Plan. We're committed to being transparent. So there are a number of ways that publicly everyone has been and can continue to access information about the work that we're doing. Our Vision Zero Columbus Progress Map is online on our Vision Zero website. So this shows the, the intersections and the corridors, where we've been implementing those action items, where you can see that those complete streets projects have taken place. We also, um, wrap up every year with an annual report that's published to the city's website. So you can access on columbus.gov, search for Vision Zero. You'll get to the City of Columbus Vision Zero website and you can see that the action plan, excuse me, the action plans and the annual reports are listed there on the website. That helps to quantify the progress that we've made, again, recapping action items that have been addressed. Apologies, the animation is not active on this slide, but I wanted to highlight that our high injury network, which are the lines on a map showing where we have disproportionate, um, fatal, serious injury and vulnerable road user crashes, that information is available on our Vision Zero website, columbus.gov/visionzero. You can also see what's, um, most centered here on the slide is our communities of interest. So the places that we're prioritizing based on those populations that we know to be most vulnerable to those, uh, serious crashes and also the actual crash data. So you can see on the map, um, the individual crashes. You can see them by road user type, all available on our Vision Zero website. Some of the measures that we've already been collecting, things that we'll continue to analyze inside Department of Public Service, includes number of crashes and the severity of those injuries, the number of injuries and fatalities for each of those individual modes. As I said, that information is available on our Vision Zero website. Also, our sidewalk condition ratings, number of curb ramps and the number of new bike route connections, um, to off-road trails, part of our Vision Zero Action Plan. Um, inside the policy, some things that aren't listed here, there are additional key measures, to your point earlier, council member, that this takes the whole community, it takes the participation, um, of other departments. So we do continue to work with Columbus Water and Power, Columbus Recreation and Parks. For anyone who's going to touch that infrastructure, we are working to quantify what those changes look like and how those are contributing to complete streets in Columbus.
And Swit, can I stop you here? Because you're, um, as we talk about, uh, a whole community approach, right? And we've had a, I think, did we call them the Advisory Council?
The Executive Committee for?
Executive Committee? Sorry, I was, I was also trying to like cheat and Google it real quick because I knew I was going to get it wrong. Um, so that executive committee that essentially was made up of different communities, stakeholders, residents, et cetera. I, I know that we in the past have had a Transportation and Pedestrian Commission, right? It's like written into code. Has our idea been that, that, that zero, Vision Zero kind of executive committee or whatever takes the place of that? I know they're not doing the same thing, but is that, is that where we've gotten some community input? Is that our intention to continue to move in that direction? Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yes, we have certainly shifted the approach to be more community-involved, community-directed in everything we do, and that's part of Vision Zero. It's communities first, it's community-engaged, adding new platforms and ways for both online and offline engagement so that we can involve them every step of the way. Bike Plus was a very community-engaged process so that we were able to take even data that was being generated by area commissions and bring that into that planning process. We'll be doing something very similar, um, as, uh, was mentioned, with Columbus Water and Power and that lighting prioritization plan. Those are federal transportation dollars to do a community-engaged project that is going to prioritize traffic, safety, safety for our residents in areas that are currently unlit. So yes, expanding how we are involving community and doing that in more ways than just a single, uh, committee.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, I'm going to give it back to my Deputy Director.
So I just wanted to go through some examples of projects we're currently working on. Uh, Livingston Avenue, Eighteenth to Nelson, we actually have a four-lane facility out here. We're going and we're going to optimize the, the roadway where we don't need that much pavement for cars and we're actually going to build a cycle track or a share, uh, elevated bikeway on the south side of the street. So this, this should make the facility much safer. It was one of the comments when we were out there that, you know, it's difficult to pedestrian across the street, people race. So we've done this on this corridor, we went from four to three lanes and actually lowered excessive speeding by 95%. So looking forward to this project. Uh, another one, everything doesn't have to be a capital project. So this started off, it was actually, uh, requested to be a signal. We went out and put stop signs up and saw that it was operating much better and then have come in and hardened the, the, I'll, I'll say the pavement here where you can only go up and stop and try to control traffic better. And this had, again, 85% fewer crashes, but this started as just kind of a quick build. Uh, here's another project that, uh, we've worked on here recently. Uh, Sullivan Avenue Corridor, where we've gone through and, uh, it's a four-lane facility, but with parking on the, on the one side. We've gone in and, uh, we actually added medians and we did bump outs on the one side to shorten crossing distances and to manage traffic and put them in a single lane to go through the corridor. And speeds and crashes have reduced. Uh, I do want to highlight the West Broad Bus Rapid Transit. I do want to highlight the West Broad Bus Rapid Transit. So you can't really see it too good on this graph, but maybe if you look and you can see how the green line is dash and then goes solid, we are partnering with COTA and we are building protected bike lanes in this corridor from Wilson Avenue all the way downtown. So that is something we're working with our partners at COTA on. We're actively engaged on this to improve that facility. And this is a high point for this, for this meeting. So link us, the TSI funding. This is new funding to the, to the region. One of the hardest funding for us to obtain is, is funding for shared use paths, trails, and whatnot. It, it's kind of a donut hole when it comes to funding. It's not readily available. And we do spend a lot of our funding on this when we're reconstructing roads. It is part of our reconstruction, but it's very difficult to do these projects on their own. This funding actually supplies that opportunity for us to go do the sidewalk shared use paths. So it's 83 projects. It's roughly $60 million a year. I believe it's, can't read it, 55 multi-jurisdictional projects. We have to work with all our partners throughout the region to make sure we're building connectivity through the, through the region. A lot of people don't know where the boundaries of Columbus end. They just know where the sidewalk or the shared use path ends. So this is such a great program for us to go connect everybody, get them to the greenways, get them to the trails, or get them sidewalks to bus stops. And a lot of these projects do connect into the BRT. So I was going to close out with how often are we going to review this policy? So again, this is a citywide policy. The fact that it, you know, would be signed by the director, it is citywide. Everybody has to follow it. This policy, according to itself, has to be reviewed every two years. We do imagine just putting this out there and as we start using it, we want to look for things and see how we're doing, how we're tracking, how we, how are we managing the exceptions. We are going to end up probably reviewing it within that first year to, again, understand what we're doing, what we've created, and then we would look at that as an opportunity to go out and make sure the policy is providing the intended outcomes that we, we did plan
One other question that I had, so first of all, thank you. Thank you to all of you for being here today, and thank you for the presentation. We're going to switch over, move over to public commentary in just a second. But I do have a question around, and I know that I think this might be somewhere in our complete streets policy, but I've certainly seen it in other places. When we think about, I feel like we're adding a lot of new strategies for folks that they're just not used to, right? Like, I, I don't think, well, I mean, basic understanding of a crosswalk and when someone's in it and not to move at all at any time is just basic knowledge I don't think everyone knows, but it's certainly with a flashing beacon that's in the middle of the street, understanding how to use that, the bump outs. I think we've, we've heard from folks, they're just, they're not used to it, especially in a, in a neighborhood where you have not had those, right? And, you know, roundabouts even, right? Because folks are not necessarily used to that. What does that public engagement look like when we have a conversation with the community about some of these strategies and tools that they're seeing coming into their community? What does that look like?
We didn't really talk about engagement from the, the planning level or when we're out doing a project, meeting with the people and actually talking about what we're building and how it should be used. We did do something similar, though, up on 161 where we put in the mini roundabouts. We actually met, we actually met with the fire department to make sure they could circulate it. They knew how it was supposed to operate. We provided literature for people to understand how you enter and how it's yield on enter and how to use it. We did, I mean, when we opened it up, we had people make some wrong maneuvers, make lefts to the roundabout, but after a certain amount, like, I think it was within a week, people started figuring it out. We didn't have that many errors, and people started understanding how to use it. Same with the bump outs. People, once you, once you shorten up that distance, they understand pretty quickly, but everybody keeps their, you know, keeps their wits about them and looks around because to your point, it is something new, something they're unfamiliar with. And again, they try and get out and be seen by vehicles, but the bump out does that.
And I know that this is a conversation we've had with the department, but I want to ensure, because we have the public here, I mean, even like shared use paths, you know, on Cleveland Avenue, I think there was not an understanding of what the shared use path was or the intention of it. So I, I think this is an ongoing conversation about, you know, whether it's with Vision Zero, through our Vision Zero mechanisms, or, you know, as we approach the project and we're talking about what's happening, different mechanisms for how we're letting folks know about what's coming and how they use those, those different tools that are on the road, because I think it is new for us. And, you know, folks don't know, especially with a shared use path that might look similar to the street, it looks like a separate lane, you know? And, and if folks are not used to that, they will park in it or they will do thing, they will misuse it if they don't know what it is. And so I think that's just a continued conversation, and I'm sure folks have lots of different ideas about the best way to kind of engage the public on that. But I, I just wanted to point that out, that that's certainly conversations that we've had as we've been going to area commissions or just hearing back from residents when it comes to safety. So do my colleagues have questions?
Yeah, on that point, I did have the opportunity to attend. I would only describe it as a charrette. It was on the Near East Side about the pilot they were doing, and they had the different models of the bump outs in the thing. And they were asking, the consultants were asking the citizens that came in to react and pick which ones they thought would be most effective and ask questions on how it was. And I thought that was a, a good program and a good way of having some public engagement.
Thank you. And you're referring to the slow zone that were, that's going into the Near East Side, which is using various strategies to slow speeds in that area because we know that it's a, it's been an ongoing problem. So the other thing that I do want to mention is that we are looking at opportunities to actually buy a quick build kit for us to use to have infrastructure in specific areas where we're seeing problematic intersections that we can more quickly. A lot of times, I mean, you all have, the supply chain demand still continues to be an issue. And so getting materials in for, I mean, there's, there's actually a quick build project that we've had some challenges with that we're hoping to finally get up this year, I think. I think Randy, if that's correct, or actually, hi, team, everyone, on the south side, that it's been prolonged by just, you know, material shortage. And then also there's a worker shortage in terms of some of our contractors. And so to circumvent that, that's why we're looking at getting our own materials so that we can more quickly put those on the roads in those higher, more problematic areas. So, okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and move to public commentary. I just want to remind everyone, you have three minutes. Again, we do have a healthy list of folks, and I want to make sure that everyone has their due time. So please stick to the three minutes. There is a counter up here. When you come up, I will give the person who's up and then, so Maria Cantrell, who is no stranger to council, you were up first, and then Ben Keith, who also is no stranger to council, you were on deck. So I'll always announce the speaker and who's on deck, just to get us a little further. Brian Esterbrook, Brian, I don't know, do I see you? Oh, there you are. Okay, Brian, you were after Ben. So Maria, the floor is yours. So if you can introduce yourself and any entities you are representing here tonight.
Well, thanks so much for having me. Yes, my name is Maria Cantrell. I work with Burgess and Nyepel. Some folks here may recognize me because I was Swed's predecessor as Vision Zero Coordinator, worked at public service for eight years before my role here at Burgess and Nyepel. So we have, in my role now, I continue to do what I've been doing for the city and supporting cities around the country to, you know, work to eliminate traffic fatalities and serious injuries. And Complete Streets certainly supports that, right? It embodies the safe streets and safe speeds elements of the Safe System approach. I think, we haven't talked about it specifically here today, but again, that's looking at all of these elements that contribute to fatal and serious injury outcomes, including looking at post-crash care, safe vehicles, and safe people as well. But Complete Streets focuses on the safe streets and speeds, as we learned about here earlier today. And we know that a complete street, which considers vulnerable road users and safe, appropriate speeds, benefits everyone. I know we've talked a lot about vulnerable road users, but I think a lot of our advocacy will focus around that here today, but it's, it's, let's also remember that this supports our motorists as well. And James brought up the example of Mound Street and the conversion of that from two lanes in each direction and taking some of that space to accommodate vulnerable road users, and there was a school there. But that corridor had a history of motor vehicle crashes as well. So a complete street really truly is intended to benefit everyone. And then it encourages the shift to different modes of transportation as well. When people feel more comfortable walking and biking and taking transit, guess what? That alleviates congestion as well. So again, benefits for everybody. And the Complete Streets benefits everybody as a whole because it does consider context. It looks at the area of where you are doing your project. You know, is this a street that's intended to move people through the area, or is this more of a community-based area to bring people together to support the economy, bring people to work? So considers that as well. And considering that I had experience here historically, you know, I recognize that, as mentioned, we've been doing a lot of these complete streets elements over the years, but now this is putting it together in a specific policy. Again, we're using the high injury network and communities of interest from Vision Zero to prioritize work in projects and incorporating that context. And also, again, as mentioned earlier, this policy does speak to what the exemptions might be. And I just wanted to give one more plug to the city. One of the examples that wasn't on here but near where I work in Franklinton, State Street is complete because it, okay. It recently has had a lot of redevelopment in the area as well as a new community park. There is a charter school there, and through the combination of looking at the redevelopment and requirements through that and resurfacing, it has added upgraded crosswalks and curb extensions there and sidewalk connections. So it's a really low-stress, great street there that I was pleased to see just, and I didn't even know that one was coming. So I just want to give kudos to public service and the City of Columbus for the great work that they've been doing, that they're going to continue to do and grow and improve upon.
So Maria, thank you for being here today. Thank you for your work. I know we've had conversations before. I mean, I think your work, I think, was transformative even for yourself to continue that work while after you left the city. And I think even going to some of our, even going to a firm, right? That is now taking these ideas and putting these concepts into place when they are partnering with us on particular projects, I think is also key because we're already, there's alignment there already. So I appreciate that. So thank you for your advocacy here tonight.
Happy to be here. Thank you.
Absolutely. So Ben Keith, Brian Esterbrook is on deck, and then after Brian, we're going to Dustin Holfinger. And if I mispronounce everyone's, anyone's name, please correct me, and thank you for
All right, council and city staff, thank you for holding this hearing tonight. I'm Ben Keith. I serve on the North London Area Commission, but this comment is solely my personal comment and does not reflect the city commission's opinions. Tonight, I'm just here as a random young professional who rides a bike to get around. It's cheap, it's faster than walking or taking the bus. And I appreciate that you have all put a lot of work into this effort, but I believe that this proposal is completely inadequate. My written comment has many details. I'm going to focus on two items right now. The first item is maintenance. You can't just build the infrastructure, you have to keep it in good repair. I rode down the Summit Street Bike Lane to get here, and I counted more than two dozen damaged or missing butt flex posts along the way. I picked up these two. It's not just about flex posts, though. When drivers knock down street signs, they aren't replaced quickly, even when we submit 311 requests. If the infrastructure keeps breaking because drivers keep driving cars into it, then DPS needs to replace that infrastructure with something that is sturdy. And despite a Vision Zero Action Plan 2.0 commitment, DPS still has no published plan for sweeping bike lanes clear of car parts, gravel, glass, and leaves. 311 requests for sweeping are routinely denied, and the same goes for sidewalk repairs. The city publishes emergency response times, but we don't actually track that information for how quickly unsafe bike lanes or broken sidewalks are repaired. City Council needs to set clear standards. DPS needs to track compliance and maintain sufficient capacity within the department to meet council standards. My second item is that this policy is already outdated. It relies on DPS's existing design memos, many of which were outdated at the time they were first published. In April 2022, ODOT published the Multimodal Design Guide, which contained many best practices for safe infrastructure. When DPS published its crosswalk design memo just a few months later, none of the multimodal design guide's guidance was reflected in the design memo. ODOT says that on 35 mile per hour or faster roads, crosswalks should have high visibility ladder style crosswalk markings. And DPS says that most crosswalks do not deserve any paint at all. In August 2023, the Federal Highway Administration published a crosswalk design recommendation saying that all crosswalks at uncontrolled intersections should use high visibility paint, and DPS did not update its design memo. In 2024, the Federal Highway Administration published an updated CD, and DPS did not update the design memo. In December 2024, the Federal Department of Transportation formally adopted the public right-of-way accessibility guidelines, but DPS did not update its design memos. ODOT updates the Multimodal Design Guide every few months. NACTO publishes new memos regularly, but DPS still hasn't updated its design memos. It continues to use outdated standards. And this policy does not require any sort of review or update process for those outdated design memos. All that this proposed policy does is formalize the status quo. There is an easy fix. City Council should require DPS to adopt the NACTO standards as most recently updated. Because if Columbus is to achieve zero pedestrian deaths by 2035, council must ensure that Columbus adopts a binding policy and actually builds complete streets. One more death is too many, but I expect that this status quo policy will not reduce deaths fast enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Ben. I just wanted to hand it over to the department. There was a lot there. We're not going to be able to tick down the list, but can you speak to maintenance of bike lanes and their infrastructure and also just the cleanup?
So I'll start with the, the sweeping policy. So we're currently working on that right now. We do have sweeping on the lanes, and we do go by 311s. We have been out on, I'll say dedicated facilities where we have with. We are in the process of buying equipment that's actually dedicated for the narrower lanes right now. Actually just got passed, I believe, at council this week, so we are on track for that. We are working forward. I welcome any comments on standards because we are constantly updating our standards. So I'll look for the recording on this, and we'll go back and check out what you've, what you've mentioned today.
Yep. Well, if you are constantly updating your standards, I encourage you to publish them on columbus.gov because the ones on columbus.gov have not been updated since 2022. And every time I've submitted a 311 request for street sweeping in a bike lane, 311 has said that they use a standard schedule, and it will be swept on the standard schedule, or if it's in the University District, they say it will be swept on the standard schedule, and then it doesn't get swept. So I hear what you're saying, but I'm not seeing that in practice.
Thank you, Ben. And thank you for your continued advocacy. Also, I want to point out, Ben also sent us, which I shared with my colleagues, thank you, the written testimony. So folks who are here, I know it's not everyone's, some folks have spoken kind of off the cuff, but I also would love, aside from the recording that we have, if you do have your written testimony and didn't send it to us, if you could send it back to us, and we're happy to share that both with the department and also with my colleagues. So Brian, the floor is yours. So after Brian, Dustin, after Dustin, Parag from Warpsey.
Thank you so much, council member and council members. Thank you, deputy director. My name is Brian Esterbrook, and I serve as the Board President of Yea Bikes. And I'm also, you know, a resident of downtown slash Franklinson. And so I want to thank you for the work that's been done on this Complete Streets policy. There's been good leadership from city council, most notably, I think, you council member, Rosa de Padilla, the hard work of the Department of Public Service staff. Notably, I would say folks like Brian Ashworth and Justin Goodwin have been really responsive and have tried to work with us when we have issues that come up, so I'm grateful for them. But there's a moment of opportunity here. This policy that's being put forward, it does build on the Bike Plus Plan, it does build on Vision Zero, and it shows progress toward a Columbus where our streets are safe and comfortable and connected for everyone, which is what we've all been saying. But we also have to be clear and candid about the challenges we face. Every week, people in the city are injured or killed while biking, walking, or rolling. These tragedies fall hardest on our neighbors who already face significant barriers due to income, race, disability, geography, and our neighbors And our neighbors are paying for unsafe streets with their lives, with damage to their bodies and their lives. So this draft policy, while it is a strong start for it to matter in the lives of everyday people, it has to be enforceable, it has to be transparent, and it has to be truly citywide. And I want to focus on three recommendations. There's more in my written testimony that I submitted. First, council should adopt a complete streets policy into city code. So it lasts across administrations and carries the force of law. I understand that there are concerns about remaining nimble and able to update the code when necessary. There are ways to do it. Many other cities have adopted complete streets policies into their city code. And when it's in the, when it's in the code, it's enforceable in a different kind of way. Secondly, council should reestablish the Transportation and Pedestrian Commission. We've called for this a few times. The reason why is because this commission provides community voice, and it allows for community members to be at the table when decisions are being made and to have input and guidance in that process. Thirdly, we urge you to pass a resolution, city council to pass a resolution, a whole-of-government resolution directing all city agencies, not just public service, not just Department of Development, to work together to make complete streets real in every neighborhood. This policy is not about abstract standards. It's about the grandmother in Linden who cannot safely cross the street to reach the bus stop. It's about the teenager in the hilltop biking to school without a safe lane. It's about the disabled veteran who relies on Coda to get to appointments. And I'm just about finished.
Okay, keep going.
We know this work is difficult and resources are limited. Yay Bikes believes that the City of Columbus can rise to the challenge, though. And if city council adopts a robust, whole-of-government, complete streets policy that is enforceable, transparent, and citywide, it will save lives, and it will build a more equitable, connected city. And Yay Bikes stands ready to work with all of you, with the Department of Public Service, and with other agencies and our community partners to make that vision a reality. So we urge you to consider that. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And while I have you, do you want to put in a plug for this weekend?
Oh, sure. Thank you so much. So this Sunday is the Mobility Justice Advocacy Summit. That's going to be held at the Main Library downtown. Council member Barosa de Padilla is going to be one of our panelists. And so this is going to be an opportunity for advocates to come together and to think about how we advocate for mobility justice, which simply means that everybody has access to the comfortable, safe, accessible transportation around the city that they need. So 1:30 PM on Sunday, this Sunday, at the Main Library. Registration is free. yaybikes.com. Look us up and you'll find it. So thank you so much.
So Brian, we also have your testimony that we'll be sharing. Everyone sent it to both the department and us, but I'll also share it with my colleagues. And we have all of your suggestions. I just want to thank you for being a great partner, also being a great teacher to me and to my staff. And thank you for all of your feedback and your continued advocacy, and thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
So we have, let me give, oh, I don't know what happened to my cursor here, friends. Okay, so Dustin, welcome. Parag, and then after Parag, my friend Kimber Perfect.
Excellent. Hi, Chair Barosa de Padilla, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today regarding the importance of strengthening the city's complete streets policy. I'm Dustin Wholefinger, the State Government Relations Director for the American Heart Association, the national organization dedicated to building longer, healthier lives free of cardiovascular disease and stroke. Our mission, however, compels us to support policies that promote physical activity and prevent chronic disease. Policies like this are a core component of our local policy agenda because they directly address the social determinants of health by creating environments where active multimodal transportation is safe, accessible, and prioritized for all residents. I'm here today to support the proposed changes regarding the complete streets policy in Columbus, which would enhance, clarify, and future-proof the critical work of this council. That being said, we have submitted specific technical language with the simple intent to ensure that the complete streets policy is not just an initiative, but an actual fundamental lasting principle of how Columbus builds and manages its infrastructure. The revisions focus on two main areas: codification as a core design standard and implementation of accountability. I will not read those, but they are in my written testimony as well. The first set of recommendations edits are the legal safeguard for this policy. They elevate the complete streets from a policy document or a resolution to a clear, enforceable standard within city code. This is essential because it protects the council's legacy and ensures that the future administrations cannot easily weaken or discard any of your work. The second change accomplishes two major goals for the community: improved accountability. It assigns a public external body the duty to monitor how the policy is being put into action, which I think the gentleman before mentioned as well. It also elevates that community voice by requiring the use of the Transportation and Pedestrian Commission to, quote, "seek input from external stakeholders that are representative of under-invested and vulnerable communities" if those communities are not already represented. This could include seniors or residents who don't have access to cars, or even residents with disabilities who may use mobility aids. If certain areas of the city lack adequate non-motorized infrastructure, like sidewalks, crosswalks, and bike lanes, those representatives could also be engaged. By including this duty within the commission, you're giving the complete streets a vital community voice. This complete streets policy is more, is about more than just bike lanes. It is about saving lives, improving public health, and creating a connected, livable city. The requests before you today, we believe, do not diminish the authority of the Department of Public Service, but rather provide the legal clarity and public accountability necessary to fulfill the spirit of this ordinance for generations to come. We respectfully ask the council to support these additions and edits alongside the recently shared general policy procedure around complete streets.
Thank you, Dustin. Thank you for your advocacy. Thank you for being here. As I mentioned before, Sam Du Ling from our Legislative Research Office is here, and he's been looking into the specificity of, or, thank you for the specificity that you sent us around language. Sam is looking into some of those policy changes, right? I think what we are recognizing is that there's a, there's a couple different strategies that we have here, right? Code is one, but there's certainly some things that, even with the code, that it would not address, right? I mean, we talked about some of that before. You know, when we talked about lighting, prioritizing lighting. I mean, we know a couple people who manage the city budget, right? So thinking about how do we, how do we right-size priorities, right? So that they meet, so that we are starting to think about those things so that we have alignment as a city, so that we can meet some of the goals that we're putting out. So I, that's something, that's what this hearing is about tonight. So I just, again, want to just thank folks for giving us that information, for their continued advocacy, for continuing to push us so that we can look at what strategies are the ones that we can really pull on? And then how do we want to approach this that maybe meets that goal in a different way, right? So, thank you.
Yep, of course. Happy to help. Consider us a resource.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you.
Parag, Kimber Perfect, and Patrick Harris.
City council members, city staff, and members of the community. I am Parag Agrawal, and I serve as the Chief Mobility and Development Officer at the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, or MORPSY. MORPSY serves as a regional planning organization for central Ohio. We also serve as the Metropolitan Planning Organization for central Ohio. In our role as the region's MPO, we work with various cities, counties, townships, Ohio Department of Transportation, federal highway, to design and implement a safe, reliable, and a multimodal transportation network for our region's residents. First of all, I would like to thank the city council member for scheduling this public hearing on updating the City of Columbus' complete street policy. Today's public hearing will go a long way to increase the awareness of complete streets in Columbus and make our community streets safer for our community residents. Complete Streets approach integrates people and places in planning, design, and construction of transportation network. The Complete Streets approach prioritizes safety over speed and balances the needs of all modes of transportation, whether they are pedestrians, bicycles, cars, or transit. MORPSY first adopted the Complete Street policy in 2010, one of the first regional policies in the country. And we have recently revised our Complete Street policy in May of last year, in May of 2024. MORPSY's Complete Street policy applies to transportation projects receiving MORPSY's MPO funding, requiring streets to be designed and maintained for all road users. I'm very happy to report that today, over 12 communities in central Ohio have either adopted a resolution, or they have a complete street policy, making sure that streets are safer for all road users. The Columbus Complete Street policy will ensure that Columbus roadways are designed, implemented, operated, and maintained in a context-sensitive manner that enables people of all ages, incomes, and abilities to use them safely, no matter which mode of travel they use. This policy will ensure that when the city is resurfacing or reconstructing a street, it will improve those streets for pedestrians, bicycles, transit riders, and all other users in ways that is consistent with national best practices. I know that in 2008, Columbus City Council expressed its support for complete streets via resolution. And this policy supports, that provides that support into real action. I will close my comments by thanking the leadership of Dr. Kelly Sakoko from Department of Public Service for leading such a comprehensive process that lasted for more than 18 months. And I'm sure because of her leadership and of the leadership of her staff, Columbus streets will be much more safer for all community residents. Thank you.
Parag, before you head out, first of all, thank you again for being here. Thank you for all of your work. Can you just give a very quick overview of what this process has been like for the other municipalities? You know, because when we talk about having this regional approach that we all have the same sort of guiding, you know, North Star, the same sort of design standards that we're all following, again, with, you know, taking consideration that, that our roads look a little bit different. We're dealing with different challenges potentially, depending upon where you're talking about. But can you just talk about what that looks like and the importance of that connectivity? And I think, you know, I sit on the MORPSY Executive Committee, also chair the Public Policy Committee. And I think, you know, we have been a leader for lots of, lots of our regional partners, even, you know, lending out some of our engineers or working with them to figure out how we solve some of their challenges. But can you just speak about the importance? And also, if there's specific challenges that you're seeing across the region, that, that, that would be helpful for the conversation that we're having today.
So thank you, City Council Member, for this great question. I will start by saying, as Deputy Director James Young mentioned, Columbus is unique because it's basically 200 square miles. We have urban streets, we have suburban streets, and we have rural streets. And complete streets, we are basically saying, all modes of transportation. So again, the solution which is there for downtown Columbus might be very different than a suburban, suburban street or a rural street. But I think this complete street policy is flexible enough to basically look at the context of those roadways, no matter what the setting is. So again, if you look at Dublin Complete Street policy or the City of Columbus, so again, it's, they are very different communities. And again, because of the leadership of Department of Public Service, they have incorporated those things into this complete street policy. That's number one. You talked about the challenges. You talked about the challenges. So again, I have worked in different parts of the country. So the question which you asked the staff, so yes, complete streets, road diets, great things, right? So you are trying to decrease the speed, but people do talk about eliminating the parking spaces. People think all congestion is bad, which we both know is not true. But so again, it's basically more about education. People do talk about, many, many times, business owners talk about, okay, you're trying to take away my on-street parking, which is in front of my shop. Where do we, what, how should we handle that issue? So I would personally say it's more about education. When people think about congestion, they think, okay, you're increasing congestion on roadways. But again, all congestion is not bad. Studies have shown once complete street policies only help the businesses. Complete street policies help economic development. They help to drive jobs, they help to maintain jobs. So that is the key. It's more about education, working with the communities, working with the business owners who basically look, who are looking at a frame of time and say, okay, you're increasing congestion. But if you look at, let's say, one year, two years, three years timeframe, there are less accidents, congestion goes down, and the businesses do prosper.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And the last thing I'll say on this point is, you know, I think when Brian was talking about that we have this moment, I think what, what is unique about us also is that Columbus is, is usually, because we're the largest municipality in the region, right? In the central Ohio region, I mean, specifically, we, we do tend to be a leader, right? And so I think that we then, when we push specific policies, I mean, we saw this with housing, right? It then gave our suburban partners some of that leverage because some of those policies are then trickling in because we, we are bordering, right? Those municipalities. And so I think it's just, it's just a time for us to consider how we move because I think it gives some of that leverage to those communities that are then facing pushback in the opposite direction. And so it just strikes me that, you know, when we talk about the time being now, I think, you know, with our growth, it gives us the opportunity to be a little bit more aggressive, to be bolder, certainly, in our policies and what we put forward because, quite frankly, so goes Columbus, so goes the region. And so, and I say that with love and care and truth. So, so thank you for being here today.
And again, as you mentioned, when people travel, they do not look at the county lines. They do not look at the city lines, right? Nowadays, our lives are so integrated that we basically move between townships, counties, and the regions. So again, as you said, City of Columbus is the leader in this, and we basically should lead with this complete street policies.
Thank you, Parag. So next up, we have Kimber Perfect, Patrick Harris, and Stevie Pasamonte. And then not to bury the lead, we only have four speakers after that. So your, your, your number's coming up soon, friends. Thank you. Welcome back to council, Kimber.
Thank you, Chair Barosa de Padilla and council members. I'm delighted to be here on behalf of the Heart Association to testify on the importance and significance of strengthening our city's complete streets policy. I'm Kimber Perfect, and I'm a resident of Columbus's Near East Side and an avid cyclist. First, thank you. Thank you, thank you for your ongoing work to make our streets, our bikeways, our sidewalks, and transit options safer and more accessible for Columbus residents. Nine years ago, while riding my bike along Lake Erie, I was struck by a motorist. I came up out of my seat and went flying several feet in the air before crashing down onto the pavement. I was in immediate and excruciating pain. The motorist's side-view mirror that had struck my backside lay on the ground beside me along with my contorted bike. After being taken to a local hospital, I was flown via emergency by helicopter to Wexner Medical Center. I was a trauma one patient, rendered a paraplegic. My back was broken at my T12, and splinters from my mangled back had pushed into my spinal cord, causing paralysis. Two neurosurgeons were dispatched to perform emergency surgery. My family members were told that I could end up in a wheelchair with no ability to control my bladder and lose other functions based on my spinal cord injury. But my surgeons put me back together by inserting eight screws in my back and removing pieces of my backbone because it was so badly battered. By the end of that first day, I was awake and able to wiggle my toes. Two days later, I took a couple steps. After five days, I moved out of intensive care to a regular hospital room and then to Dodd Hall for rehab. I was hospitalized just under two weeks, and after months of physical therapy, I was back on my bike. While I was still in the hospital, the motorist who struck me appeared in an Ottawa County courtroom where he pled guilty to unassured clear distance and paid a $35 fine. While at the time, the City of Columbus had the three-foot clearance law in place for passing cyclists, it had not yet been adopted statewide. I'm pleased to report that later that same year, it became law statewide thanks to years of hard work by advocates and cities like ours setting the example. Columbus is once again leading the way with the complete streets policy. I live on Ohio Avenue, South Abroad, and my street's dedicated bike lane is used regularly by commuters who lack access to cars. I witness it every day. I also live on a Coda bus stop that is critical to my neighbors. I support this proposal and the Heart Association. I support this proposal and the Heart Association's call for an enforceable complete streets policy, because to me, this isn't simply city planning. It's about health and it's about safety. Right now, biking to the grocery store feels risky, because the infrastructure can just suddenly stop forcing us into the traffic. This policy will mean that I can choose to be active every day, which is the best medicine for a healthy heart, knowing that the City of Columbus is prioritizing my safety. Thank you very much.
You were fine. We were not going to cut you off, don't worry. First of all, thank all the powers of the universe, because what a gift you are, that you are here with us today. And thank you for sharing your story. And I know that it's not an easy one to share, and even as time goes by, it's still difficult to share that trauma, and it's still hard to get back on that bike or cross that street. And so, as someone who was hit by a car 20-some years ago, crossing the street still gives me heart palpitations. So, so thank you for sharing that story, and thank you for your advocacy today. And I think that, and I know that we have some other speakers who are going to share their stories as well, this is why this is paramount, and paramount to everyone who is here. Because one, one accident, one, one unfortunate incident is one too many, right? And so, it's important to share those stories, but I know that it, it's hard. So I just, again, want to thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, council members.
Patrick Harris, Stevie Pasamonte, and Sean Coser.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Council Member. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on this critically important topic. My name is Patrick Harris, and I serve as Chief External Relations Officer at the Central Ohio Transit Authority. On behalf of Coda, I want to express our strong support for the City of Columbus's revised complete streets policy. This policy is a critical step forward in ensuring our transportation network serves everyone: residents, workers, visitors, and businesses alike. Coda's vision is to move every life forward, and the execution of that vision is dependent on the same principles embedded in this policy: safe, accessible, and connected streets designed for all ages, abilities, and modes of travel. The inclusion of the Linkus Mobility Initiative in this policy is especially meaningful. I want to shout out Deputy Director Young, Ronaldo, and of course, Director Skako for their support of ensuring that that is the case in this policy. Linkus represents an $8 billion multi-decade investment in rapid transit corridors, more frequent fixed route bus service, more on-demand service through Coda Plus, strategically-placed mobility hubs, and 500 miles of sidewalks, bikeways, and trails. Complete Streets principles are essential to making those investments work for our current customers and a growing ridership. By coordinating street design, land use, and transit planning, we can ensure that rapid transit lines, underlying fixed route service, and Coda Plus zones are seamlessly connected to homes, job centers, and community destinations, thus making transit more attractive to our growing city. The alignment with Zone In's modernization effort and Vision Zero Columbus will help shape vibrant, walkable communities while prioritizing safety and access. We also appreciate the policy's clear direction, that, sorry, we also appreciate the policy's clear direction on the scopes to be shared with Coda and follow our Transit Stop Design Guide to ensure adequate transit accommodations are included from the start. And again, appreciate Deputy Director Young in mentioning that purposeful call-out. Whether it's providing space for bus shelters and mobility hubs, safe pedestrian crossings to transit stops, or ensuring our future rapid transit vehicles can operate efficiently, early coordination is critical delivering an integrated mobility framework. Finally, we commend the city for grounding this policy in Vision Zero principles, recognizing vehicle speed as a key factor in crash severity, and prioritizing improvements for everyone sharing our streets. Many of the neighborhoods we serve are home to residents who rely on transit as their primary means of transportation. Complete Streets improvements help ensure they can get to and from bus stops safely, whether they are walking, biking, or using mobility devices. Coda is proud to be a partner in this work, together with the City of Columbus, Morpsey, Franklin County, and our many community stakeholders, including Transit Columbus, who I know is well-represented here tonight. We are creating a transportation system that matches its Columbus ambitions: safe, connected, and accessible for all. Thank you again for your leadership on this policy, Chair, and for including transit as a central component of the solution. We look forward to continuing this collaboration as the policy is implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, for being here, and thank you also for, I mean, when I think about the transportation portion of this committee, I think of, you know, Coda as one of those key partners in ensuring that we remain accessible, that it's safe for everyone. And we're so excited about all the opportunities that Linkus is going to bring us, and I just keep thinking back to the campaign, more sidewalks, more bike paths, more trails, et cetera, more of the things that people want. And, and I will tell you every day that we are here at this, and my colleagues can attest to this, you know, every time we're talking about another sidewalk that's coming in, or another shared-use path, or another bike lane, that's ensuring that people are staying safe, that's ensuring that people are getting the things that they want and need for their families and their communities. And so y'all are a key part of that, and I think helping us to lead, along with the department, in what Linkus really, how it's going to transform the city, not for just moving people, but what our neighborhoods look and feel like. So, thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Stevie Pasamonte, do you like the pronunciation? I mean, it is Latino heritage month. Sean Coser, Sean, is Sean here? Oh, perfect. And then, sorry, I was looking in the wrong direction. And then after Sean Stewart-Wyland, Stewart-Wyland? Great. Floor is yours.
Hello, I'm Stevie Pasamonte, Board Chair of Transit Columbus. Council members, Director Skako, Deputy Director Young, thank you for the opportunity to provide feedback on our city's complete streets policy. We support the adoption of this policy, but with some changes, which we've sent to you directly, and which we'll be posting to our website for the public to see. Last year, community members came to this room to ask the city to do everything in its power to make our streets safe. We are all back in this room tonight at a public hearing on a niche policy on a Thursday, because we are doing everything in our power to make our streets safe. We all have reasons for being here, despite the fact that there is frankly, an absurd amount happening in the world right now. I'm here because I don't own a car. Not having the financial burden of a car allows me to support my mother, who is a disabled veteran who relies on Coda to get around. I'm here because I live in one of the most walkable areas of the city, but despite that, almost every single day, I have close calls when riding my bike or crossing the street. I'm here because my cousin was killed in a crash last year, and not a day goes by when I don't think about that. You've given us a policy draft with good bones. What we're asking for now is the meat. Director Skako, you have said many times that the things that we have asked for are things that DPS already does, and I believe you. I see some of the progress that is being made in the things that are built today. But that doesn't mean that that will always be the case, nor does it mean that that is always the case now. So we're asking for transparency and accountability now and for the future. If we want to design our streets for all road users, we must include all road users in those decisions. That's why we're asking for the reinstatement of the Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Commission to help guide the implementation of our streets, complete streets policy, and help create a transparent process to prioritize the projects that align with its goals. We know that that process may be hard, and we know that there is never enough time, never enough funding, never enough staff. But when we ask you to do something hard, it is because we are willing to do that hard thing with you. If we want to do democracy right, then it must be a collaborative process. While you all are doing this work, we are also doing this work. Transit Columbus is a volunteer-run organization. That includes the board, that includes our members, and that includes me. When I'm not up here bothering you all, I am spending 20 hours a week on top of my full-time job, teaching people about Linkus, volunteering at open streets events, or fighting for more funding for these projects, and rallying others to do the same. And people happily volunteer, because they believe that together, we can build a city that works for everyone. By incorporating the changes that we've suggested in this policy and in city code, we're asking you to show that you believe that, too. Thank you.
Thank you for being an organizer and a true advocate at heart. Thank you for being a good partner and also being a good teacher. And thank you for your continued advocacy. You and I have had conversations, you have a continued conversation also with the director, and I'm excited about what's ahead for us. I think we're all we got right now. And I think that in a time when, you know, we're seeing things get harder for us to do the things we need to do, we need to lean on each other. And so I appreciate you also coming always with a sense of wonder, always with a spirit of partnership, to both understand what challenges they may lie, but also pushing against that, because that's where progress happens, right? It's honoring where we've been, but pushing for something better, pushing us to be better, right? And so I just want to thank you for that, and thank you for rallying all of the folks at Transit Columbus. Thank you for all the Transit Columbus folks who are here today, who have also volunteered at Open Streets. It's been an amazing two events. I'll put in a plug later, but it's, this is, this is important and critical, so thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
So Sean, pointing in the right direction today. Sean, or now, Sean Coser, Stewart-Wyland, and then Sarah, Sarah Lee, who I, Sarah's still here? Oh, okay, great. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Chair Barosa-Di Badia, council members, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Sean Coser, and I am a member of the State Advocacy Committee for the American Heart Association. But as you can see, I've also had the privilege of serving residents at Columbus for over 33 years as a member of the Columbus Division of Fire, most recently the last 10 as a Deputy Chief. I'm here today to support your work on a complete streets policy for the city that will undoubtedly benefit all of those here now, but also attract new people to Columbus. As a Columbus firefighter, we don't only respond to emergencies. Principle to our mission is community risk reduction. That's why I also want to note my support for the American Heart Association's proposed amendments, not just as a first responder, but as an advocate for the community on behalf of the AHA. When we respond to a crash, or a pedestrian, or cyclist, we're responding to a predictable and preventable public health crisis. We see the aftermath firsthand, as people have talked about, heartbreakingly here. Seniors struck while walking home with groceries, children hit while riding their bikes to school. Many times, these tragedies are a direct result of streets designed only for cars and not for human beings. Poorly-designed streets, missing sidewalks, dangerous crossings, narrow lanes, not only cause crashes, but also slow down our emergency response. Traffic congestion and obstacles put our crew and the patient's immediate medical needs at risk. Safe, well-designed streets are safer for the community, and more efficient for our emergency response. As the American Heart Association has consistently highlighted, physical activity plays an important role in preventing cardiovascular disease. A lack of safe, accessible routes results in residents who are less likely to walk, bike, and be active. This contributes directly to chronic health conditions like obesity, diabetes, and hypertension, which are the root causes of heart attacks and strokes. By adopting the complete streets policy, you're doing more than just improving our roads, you are investing in healthier lives, you're giving every Columbus resident, regardless of their zip code, the chance to walk, bike, or move through their neighborhood safely and confidently. This complete streets policy is the important commitment we need to help people, keep people out of the back of our medics, which is why I respectfully ask you move forward with the proposed changes in city code. By strengthening this policy, you're supporting the safety, promoting health, and ensuring that our streets work for all of us, no matter how we choose to move. Thank you.
So Sean, thank you for being here today. First, yeah, I'm going to pause every time. Thank, first of all, thank you for the work that you do every day, right? You see people on their best days and their worst days, and what you're talking about here is preventing someone's worst day. And that's certainly an endeavor that we want to be a partner in. So I think, when I think about advocacy and having folks like you here today, is critically important to our thinking, to our partnership, to thinking about how we can be preventative and we can be proactive, and that's really what, that's the spirit of complete streets, right? And as I've learned from my friends at, you know, Transit Columbus, reconstructing our streets is, 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 that's where we're meeting human error, because we know what's going to happen, right? We know that we are human beings, that whether it's a long day at work, or your kids fighting in the background, or crying, or something else that happens, right? We are only human, and we, at times, even when we want to lock in, we might be distracted, and it is these measures that ensure our safety. And so I, I appreciate that you're bringing that perspective to the table, along with our residents who are feeling this every day. But I think it's just key for someone who, again, is seeing people on their best and worst days, to really talk about what that prevention looks like and the importance of it. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So Stewart-Wyland, Sarah Lee were representative, and then Thomas Cooper. Thomas still here? And thanks, everybody, for hanging in there. I'm, I'm doing my best to get you out of here by seven, so.
Thank you, council members, and thank you, Department of Public Service. My name is Stuart Wyland, and I am with Strong Towns Columbus, the local advocacy group. I am here today to voice our wholehearted and general support for this proposal. Again, special thanks to the Department of Public Service for your efforts here. That said, we do find there are a few modifications we would like to see to the policy, and honestly, both of these are items that you've already heard before: the accountability and visibility components. I have absolutely no doubts about the goodwill of the current DPS staff and the current city council, you know, sitting before me. But the question that, you know, the question that comes up when reviewing the way the policy is currently structured is what happens in the future, right? What happens when those individuals change? And, and, you know, I think we're seeing a little bit of this on the federal level as well, regardless of how you might feel about some of those things, things that people are, you know, expecting suddenly are, are, are changing. So it's, it's a very real and, and very legitimate concern, and I think codifying, you know, codifying this into our city code is one approach to making sure this actually has teeth, right? And cannot be, you know, subtly or quietly kind of just sidestepped, you know, at some point in the future. Other, how do I say this? Other cities have also implemented special commissions adjacent on the city org chart and not below the, the department in power, which are tasked with approving these things, and that oftentimes have members of the public on said commission. And that way, you have a third-party reviewing and approving, and basically monitoring these things to make sure that we are continuing to do the things that we state, that we are, that we want to do. So those are a couple of things that we feel that might be helpful, and do align with some of the other feedback that you've heard tonight, that, that would be helpful in making sure that this is as strong as it possibly can be this time around. I definitely appreciate, we definitely appreciate the two-year review minimum. That's a big part of the Strong Towns kind of ethos, is this constant iterative process of making sure we're revisiting things and incrementally getting better. So I, I think that's a fantastic part of this proposal, but I do think those, those couple items, specifically the accountability, and then also the visibility, public visibility, the way it's written right now, it appears that you could kind of just make exception to almost anything on, almost any project, without any, anybody even knowing, if you were that, that type of person that wanted to kind of, you know, shoot this thing in the foot. So those are the main concerns that we have. It is a common story across this country to hear of cities implementing complete streets policies only for them to be sidestepped, ignored, or performed half-heartedly because of how loose those requirements are. So let's make sure that cannot happen here in Columbus. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you for being here, thank you for your advocacy, and I, I mean, this is an offer that I put out to anyone at any time. We're always happy to meet with folks, we're always happy to take walks with folks. So if at any time, there's other things that come up, or, you know, other things that you want to put on our radar, please be sure to reach out to our office and happy to have that conversation. So thank you for being here tonight.
Will do, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So our last two speakers, Sarah Lee, our representative of, and, um, Thomas Cooper will round out the evening. So, the floor is yours.
I'll be super brief because Sarah did have to step away. I apologize. Good evening, councilmembers and Chair Barroso de Padilla, and thank you for letting me speak. My name's Eliza Pendexter. I'm here representing HNTB, um, a, a firm here in downtown Columbus that does transportation engineering. And we want to express our strong support for the Complete Street policy being advanced by the Department of Public Service. This policy is a critical step for Columbus. Um, the policy will create a city where our streets are designed and maintained for everyone, whether they're walking, biking, riding a scooter, transit, or driving. The approach created by the Complete Street policy will help us build a transportation system that works for people of all ages, incomes, and abilities. This policy also promotes safety. We know a safe street design can save lives, and we can no longer afford to treat these design decisions as optional. They must be a part of how we build and rebuild every street and every neighborhood. As we all know, access to safe and affordable ways to get to work, school, doctor appointments, visit family and friends should be available to everyone and not depend on your zip code. This policy will give clear direction to the city departments and maximize the impact of every infrastructure dollar. It also supports our city's climate goals, public health, and long-term growth strategies. Councilmember Barroso de Padilla, thank you for taking the time to, and your leadership on this policy to help make Columbus a safer and more inclusive city.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your advocacy. Uh, and to end out our evening tonight, uh, Thomas Cooper.
I am, uh, Thomas Cooper, also with, uh, Strong Towns Columbus. Um, I'm here mainly to support the adoption of these policies, um, but with the inclusion of many of the recommendations that have been spoken to here previously. Um, as far as why I'm here and why I feel like this is very important and safety is at the top of my mind, um, I grew up in the area and biking was how I got around, how I, um, basically experienced independence at a young age and, um, really just gave me that freedom to learn on my own independently of my parents. Uh, but unfortunately, when I was 12, I was hit by a car, um, and in fact, received my first traffic violation at that time. Um, and didn't regain the confidence to ride my bike again until I was sent off to college around the age of 18. Um, and I just don't want, um, my future family that I am now working on with my spouse to have to deal with these issues on the streets that are not well-designed at the moment. And me personally, being a bike commuter, even as an adult, do not feel safe in and would feel reckless putting my kids onto these streets, frankly. So, I do want to emphasize that this Complete Streets policy needs to be both accountable and traceable in following the recommendations set forth by both the American Heart Association and Transit Columbus, uh, in order to make sure that going forward, families feel safe traveling together as families, not just within their vehicles, and are able to get around safely without anybody having to experience what I had to experience. And with that, um, also ask for the city to put a little bit more forth as far as changes that can happen quickly and can happen now, rather than necessarily waiting for, uh, the next big utility project or big resurfacing project, basically capital improvement projects, um, to come forth to then implement these Complete Street policies, which I'm aware of, the quick build projects that are going on currently, but I'm just asking for more resources to be put into that. Um, because as every day takes by, uh, more and more people are either missing the opportunity to do, to experience this independence as a child, um, by not being able to go on these streets because they're scared or their parents are scared, or also being injured themselves. So, thank you for the efforts you've put forth so far, and I would really appreciate a little bit more, um, on the front of the quick build, uh, low-hanging fruit, um, front as well, and then also, again, to implement the recommendations from Transit Columbus and the American Heart Association.
So, thank you for being here. Again, thank you for sharing your story. I think anytime, it's a lot. I know it is. And so, um, I, I appreciate that advocacy. I appreciate you being part of Strong Towns Columbus. Again, that, that offers out, I'd, I'd love to meet with you all and talk about some of the priorities that you have and how that, where though there are, there is alignment and opportunities for partnership. So thank you for being here this evening.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Um, so, first of all, thank y'all for hanging in there. I know it's been, it was, it was a two-hour journey that we were on. Um, I want to, uh, thank my partners, my team at the department. Um, I want to thank, uh, our leader, uh, Director Skakow, because I know that, um, it is your strong desire to meet these goals, that you have made changes and implementations along with your team. Um, not all of them are here, but a good portion of the leadership of your team are here. And I think every day we have these conversations about the opportunities that we have that we can seize, how we can make dollars stretch, especially under, um, ever-changing conditions, right? And how we can be creative about meeting the promise that we have to our community. And so I want to thank you for your work. I want to also thank all of our advocates for also acknowledging that. I think it's challenging sometimes when you're sitting in these positions and, um, there are challenges that sometimes we're facing, and we're trying to figure out how to balance that. And, um, it, it, um, it feels good to acknowledge the progress that we've been able to make together. And so I want to thank you again for your continued advocacy. I want to thank you for, for acknowledging how far we've come, but also saying we still have a ways to go, and I don't think anybody disagrees with you on that point. I want to thank my colleagues for your continued partnership, my vice chair, um, because obviously you are part of these decisions, and I think giving insight into that. Our Department of, uh, Water and Power, thank you for being here. Thank you for listening today. I think in the continued conversations that we have to again have alignment across, you're only one part of that, but I think certainly a key part of that as we think about the things that we need in terms of, uh, making our community safer. Um, I want to thank my team for, um, you, you make all the things happen. So thank you for being here. Thank you for, um, also bringing folks together today for this very important conversation. Um, it's funny, uh, Stevie, you said this was niche, and it's interesting because while this, there's a specificity around this, I think no one's going to argue with making our roadway safety safer, right, for themselves and for the people that they love. And at the end of the day, that's really what we're talking about and why we've gotten to a level of specificity that some people might be like, huh? Uh, at the end of the day, that's what we're working towards, right? And that's what this two-hour conversation and hours and hours of work are about. So, I do want to put in one plug, and that is on Sunday, October 26th, and I'll talk about it more between now and then, but it is our last and our biggest Open Streets event. Open Streets is a demonstration of exactly what we're talking about. It's when we close down the streets so that everyone can play in the streets safely, uh, but that the streets really are for all and we're demonstrating that. Folks have the opportunity to bike, roll, take transit, come and, and you can test-ride a scooter if you've never test-rode it. Uh, I saw our folks from Vio were here earlier today, that you can test-ride one of those, uh, those mobility devices. We've had a ton of people do that who've never had the opportunity to. We had folks who came down and skated down. Very cool story. We had our Department of, uh, Neighborhoods there and they had an obstacle course and they were giving kids biking licenses. And at the end of it, our folks, our partners from Urban Legends actually gave them a bike. And I remember the dad coming over like, "We can really take this bike home today." Like he thought his daughter misunderstood, and they were like, "No, the bike is yours." Right? And like, the joy, and Thomas talked about this, I too was an avid bike rider because that's how you got around when you were like 12 to 15, right? And the joy, the utter joy of this, uh, little girl when she was able to take that bike home. And the fact that she lives in Linden where she can have a shared-use bike path, that she can safely ride that on, right? Like, that's the dream for every kid. That's the dream for this kid that I see every day riding his bike to school. There's two elementary schools in my neighborhood and I see a ton of kids riding their bikes there, crossing busy intersections like James Road and making sure they get to school safely. That's what we're all working towards. So, please join us on October 26th from 12 to 4. Transit Columbus will be there, uh, Cota will be there, our friends from Morpsy and a ton of other, um, entities will be there as well. Um, thank you all for being part of today. If you, uh, did not have the opportunity to participate today or saw today's recording and have feedback that you want to give us, uh, please reach out to my office. And with that, that concludes today's, uh, public hearing. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night and get home safe.